I'm spent serving the citizens of Winchester. And let us thank all the town employees, especially our new town manager, Mr. Richard Hamer, Howard, and Assistant Town Manager Mark Tugood, Brian Kevany, our comptroller, and the town clerk, Mary Ellen Lanner. And finally, I would like to thank all of you town meeting members for your attendance, participation, and decision-making through the session so far. Please be seated. There was a, ladies and gentlemen, there was a handout on the table that I think if you didn't get, you ought to try to get it before you leave. It's got nothing to do with the town meeting exactly, but will in the future. It's a handout concerning the feasibility study for the new high school. And there's a meeting on June 5th at 7:00 PM at the Winchester High School, and the handout would be interesting reading. And then one short visit. I'd like to introduce Anne Emmerich, who is the lady who is in charge of the Girl Scouts who work every town meeting out front. Anne?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much, John. I promised John I'll only take one minute, but I'm Anne Emmerich. I'm a Girl Scout leader here in town, and I wanted to thank you all for the support you give the Girl Scouts through letting them staff the cookie and coffee table here at town meeting. This is the 12th grade Girl Scout troop. There are actually 10 girls in our 12th grade Girl Scout troop, and I thought some of you might remember these girls. When they were in 7th grade, they started working at the coffee and cookie booth, and they did it until 10th grade. So you knew these girls when they were little, and now they're in 12th grade. They'll be graduating in a couple of weeks. The 10 of them are going to go to Washington, DC for June 9th. Girl Scouts are gathering from around the world to celebrate their 100th birthday, and these girls will represent Winchester at that event. And I also wanted to especially, I can quickly say all of their names, but I think John will get mad if I do that, so I'll say two. Delaney, could you step forward? I'd like to introduce Delaney Palamacumbura. Delaney has earned her Gold Award for Girl Scouts, which is the highest award, similar to the Eagle Scout Award. And I'd also like to introduce Sarah Craven, who's just finishing her Gold Award project. Anyway, we're very proud of these girls, but I wanted to thank you all. Your support was tremendous. You may sometimes think that these girls are just there, you know, outside, and they've got your cup of coffee, but for us as a troop, it really bonded us to be here all the time at town meeting, waiting for you to come out. And so we really, really, above everything else, we appreciated that, and also your support. Let them do many community service projects, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start on Article 17, and if you want to make a note of this, there's a high probability that Article 24, 25, 31, and 33 will be indefinitely postponed. And if you recall, we postponed Article 4, which is Shade Trees, and that is going to be taken up after Article 30. So we turn now to Article 17. By the way, I feel very confident that we are going to get through the town meeting tonight, and I hope you will-
That's it.
...assist me by booing anybody who is too long. And the Article 17, to see if the town will vote to create and appropriate money to a stabilization account, and it's moved and seconded that a special education stabilization account be created in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. And there's a second motion, ladies and gentlemen. I'll read that, too, and we'll allow discussion on both motions simultaneously. It's moved and seconded that an appropriation of $200,000 from the school department's fiscal year 12 operating budget be made to the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Yes, sir. Chris?
Thank you. Good evening. As John just said, the first motion establishes the fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. The second motion transfers monies from the FY-12 education appropriation to the stabilization fund. The school committee and the finance committee have been talking about this concept for a couple of years. Our biggest challenge to managing the education budget is special education costs increases due to circumstances beyond the control of the administration and the school committee. The purpose of this fund is to provide a new tool to help Winchester better manage unexpected special education costs, including tuition and transportation that can occur, for example, in a mid-year student transfer. Establishing this fund will not cost the town any additional money. The stabilization fund would be funded initially from money already appropriated to the 2012 education budget, and it was unspent at the end of this year. You might ask, why now? We have an opportunity to create this fund now because our circuit breaker reimbursement from the state was greater than the amount budgeted. And how will the funds be used? If the district were to realize an unexpected mid-year student transfer, the funds would be used for those special education costs. The administration, the school committee, would come to town meeting and request the use of those funds. You might ask, how is this different from the way it has been in previous years? The unexpected unbudgeted special education cost increases in previous years would have had to have been funded by cutting or freezing non-special education costs, like school supplies and materials. You might ask, how would we replenish this fund? The Special Education Fund would be replenished by budget appropriation, by transfer from available funds, or a combination of these methods. For example, if an out-of-district tuition and transportation costs were decreased after the budget were voted by town meeting, or if an out-of-district student moves out of Winchester, or if the state or federal funding were increased, such as this year, when we received circuit breaker reimbursement that was greater than the budget, then the school committee's intention is to use these favorable variances to replenish the Special Education Fund. We ask that you support both motions, one and two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The Finance Committee, and particularly our education subcommittee, have seen the unpredictable increases and decreases in special education costs for out-of-district tuition and transportation. We recognize the impact that these unbudgeted increases have on services for the general education population, particularly in the supplies and materials, as this is where budget cuts are made, when mandated services are added after the fiscal year budget is set and personnel and equipment are already in place. We support the creation of this fund to provide a source of revenue to fund these unanticipated increases, and we appreciate the school committee's commitment to establishing a policy regarding replenishments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A question to the Finance Committee.
Can't hear you. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A question to the Finance Committee. It's my recollection that normally when these types of accounts are established, there is a limitation, a dollar limit, on the amount of the funds, and I note that this proposal does not have a dollar limit on it. Am I correct in assuming that that is normally how we handle such funds, and if so, why has it not been done in this case?
Yep. Yes. Beg your pardon? You've got to go to the mic. They're asked, the question is that the Finance Committee, to the Finance Committee is, why are we not putting a limit on the amount of money that would be in this fund like we do in other revolving accounts? Is that correct?
Yeah, so this is a stabilization fund and not a revolving fund, and we are not required to have a cap on it. Chris can talk about it, Mr. Linsky, and also possibly through you to the comptroller. I'm just trying to see if he wants to talk.
Let me run the meeting. Mr. Stolinski. Not giving up that easy.
There have been towns that have set a target of 2% of the entire education budget. To be honest, I don't feel as though we have right now enough experience with things to cap this, and I don't have a vision that we would actually have enough funds reverted such that would be a problem, but that is something that this town meeting can actually look at every single year, and we could amend, and we could actually set a cap for this.
Okay. Did you have any, to the comptroller, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Conti, I think you're, are you referring to revolving funds where we vote a cap on the spending limit? Okay, this particular fund wouldn't fall within that category, as would the 53 E and a Half accounts, like the Board of Health, the archival, and the energy. This is a separate kind of fund.
There was a question up back. Yes, sir.
This question, I believe, would be for the school committee. The question is, what is the history of reversions to the general fund, and would this fund in the future be funded out of reversions, or would we continue to have reversions? And just a comment, it was, I believe, not until the current supervisor that we saw reversions to the general fund, which, to me, is evidence of good fiscal management.
So let me take, I think there was a couple of questions. Let me take them in order in which I recall them. So the history of reversions to the general fund from the general education appropriation. My recollection in the past four years, we have reverted funds. There was 100,000 three years ago, and I believe less than 50,000 the last couple of years. Would they be used to fund this account? No. They would actually have to be part of a town meeting warrant article to appropriate them from that over to this fund. So those would automatically go back into the general fund if that did not happen. And I don't know if I covered all those. Is there anything I missed?
I don't think so.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question, ladies and gentlemen. Are you ready for the question? This takes a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair declares that it's unanimous, and obviously more than the two-thirds vote, the motion passes. That brings us to Article 18. This is to continue a revolving fund for the archival center. It's moved and seconded- I'm sorry, I forgot the second motion. Okay, it's moved and seconded that an appropriation of 200,000 from the school department's fiscal year 12 operating budget be made to the Special Education Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Apologize for that. Article 18, moved and seconded that the town continue the revolving fund for the archival center in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, in order to receive monies, grants, or gifts and fees associated with the sale of reproduction of historical items, that funds derived from the sale of such items be expended by authorization of the town manager, and that amount of the fund be limited to $5,000. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article 19, this is for another revolving account, and this one is for the energy. It's moved and seconded that the town will continue a revolving fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, in order to receive fees associated with the use of energy in school and municipal buildings, that funds derived from the assessment of fees for such may be expended by authorization of the town manager for projects that conserve energy in the operation of towns' buildings, and the amount of that fund be limited to $80,000. Recommendation from the Finance Committee, please. I'm sorry. After the Finance Committee. Recommendation? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you the proponent?
Yeah.
I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In 2006, faced with dramatic and continuing annual increases in energy costs and growing concerns about carbon emissions, the Board of Selectmen formed the Energy Management Committee. In the six years since the Energy Management Committee was formed, the town, through the considerable ability and commitment of the committee's citizen volunteers, RDPW, and the town's energy coordinator, has made a series of energy efficiency improvements, negotiated favorable utility purchase agreements, and implemented best-practice energy management operating procedures that have allowed the town to avoid over $3 million in energy costs. As part of this overall effort, town meeting in 2008 established a revolving fund to retain energy surcharges for the rental of school and municipal buildings, so that these funds could be used to make low-cost, high-return energy efficiency improvements. The Energy Revolving Fund also receives utility payments earned by carefully monitoring and reducing our electric consumption during summer, peak summer use periods. Your approval of Article 19 will continue the Energy Revolving Fund in fiscal year 2013, and will again authorize the town manager to approve capital projects that conserve energy in the operation of the town's buildings. The amount of the fund is limited to $80,000. In FY-11, in FY-11, the Energy Revolving Fund received $30,398 in revenue, and because of balance carried over from the previous year, was able to make $44,311 in expenditures and improvements. And to date, in fiscal year 2012, the Energy Revolving Fund has received $33,315 in revenues. Your motion book contains a list of the specific projects that either have been completed or are underway and will be funded by the Energy Revolving Fund. As you can see, the projected net investment by the town for these energy efficiency projects is fully paid back by the projected energy savings in a very short period of time, ranging from a few months to just over two years. The Energy Revolving Fund is a very effective way to advance our overall goal of greater energy efficiency and carbon reduction, and the Board of Selectmen asks that you continue the energy fund for fiscal year 2013 by approving Article 19.
Thank you, Mr. Howley. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action. We support the continuation of this fund. The quick turnaround required from the town in order to participate in grant-funded energy management projects makes it difficult for these projects to fit in with the town's regular budget and capital planning process. The projects continue to provide substantial cost avoidance.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, are you ready for the question, ladies and gentlemen? I'm sorry? Oh, oh, Mr. Natale. How could I miss you, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In 2009, the energy costs at the VO school was, round numbers, about $75,000, which was approximately half the energy cost at any of the other elementary schools. And the reason for that, it was not, by the way, the energy sieve that was reported, the reason it was so low is because it was the only school on gas, using gas. So my question is, is it not possible to convert all the schools, and maybe all of the municipal buildings, to use gas instead of oil?
Thank you, sir. Could we have somebody that could answer that? Yeah. Yes, sir. Just one.
Bill Swanton from Precinct 7 and Chairman of the Energy Management Committee. Thank you for asking that question. We're actually working very hard at that. We have converted several of the schools already. We converted the library recently. We're working right now with National Grid to convert McCall, which is the second-biggest user of energy in the town. We converted the high school many years ago when we put in the new chillers. So we're getting to the point now, there are very few places left. DPW, for example, went to gas as well. So there are very few buildings left that are being fired by oil, and we're trying to get rid of each and every one of them. Right now, the biggest issue is capacity at particular choke points in town, and that's the thing that we're working on with National Grid to try to get done for McCall. So we are doing that.
Thank you very much, sir. Further on the question, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article 20, this is the Board of Health, yeah, just one second. It's moved and seconded that the town will vote to continue a revolving fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, in order to receive monies, grants, or gifts and fees charged for public health programs such as clinics sponsored by the Board of Health, and further authorize the Board of Health to administer and expend funds for these and related programs such as medical services, up to a limit of $60,000 in fiscal year 2013. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Dave Heinel from the Board of Health. I wanted to bring to your attention a handout that we provided last Monday regarding the funds in our revolving fund. As we've discussed in previous town meetings, this fund is used to maintain the various clinics that the town runs, including the shingles and the flu clinic that is a great deal of our community takes advantage of. And the current balance, as we state, is about $10,000, and we expect that to have reimbursements from Medicare and other reimbursement agencies that will build that up over the year, so that we will have the funding as we go forward. And if there's any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action. However, we request more detailed budget plans for this 53 and a Half revolving fund and all of the town's revolving funds for looking at expenditures in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Are you ready for the vote, ladies and gentlemen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Heinnold. That brings us to Article 21. Article 21 and 22 are very similar. They're to establish, both of them are to establish a revolving fund, one for grass fields and the other ones for synthetic. And so the first one is, I'll read the motion, and this is presented by the Field Management Committee. It's moved and seconded that the town vote to establish a revolving fund in accordance with Massachusetts General law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, in order to receive monies, grants, or gifts, fees charged for grass field permits sponsored by the Field Management Committee, and further to authorize the town manager, based upon recommendations of the Field Management Committee, to administer and expend funds for natural grass playgrounds, tennis and basketball permits, and that the amount of the funds be limited to 50,000. If said fund is authorized at an annual, at a spring annual town meeting, all funds except interest will remain in the account and not revert to the general fund at the close of the fiscal year. Okay? I made one minor change there, ladies and gentlemen, because it said is reauthorized by town meeting. I just added the words "at the annual spring town meeting" because consistent with the other ones, if this passes, we should take them always in this, at the budget time. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. And I'd like to thank everybody out in town meeting for the support they've given the Field Management Committee and the Board of Selectmen in the past. With your help, we've funded a new turf field.
Having trouble hearing you up back.
On behalf of the Field Management Committee and the Board of Health, I'd like to thank everybody out in town meeting for their support in the past, the field improvements you've paid and you've supported, field management on the synthetic turf field. Last fall, you allocated $200,000 with the help of the Field Development Committee. We'll have a new field at Manchester. And going back to that 2008 vote, this is an outstem of that particular vote. As you are all aware, we spent an awful lot of money on Norton Field. One of the concerns was when we had to replace the turf, it would be a very expensive proposition for the town. It would come out of the stabilization fund, and it would be several hundred thousand dollars in the future. The estimated life of that field is 10 to 12, eight to 12 years. The Board of Selectmen, actually, the Field Committee has been diligently working on how to get this turf field improvement number lower. One of the conclusions we've come to is a users fee. This users fee, some of the money would be saved and eventually put into a stabilization account, which I plan to bring forward in the fall town meeting for both fields, natural and turf, and then be transferred into a stabilization fund, a certain amount to remain there until it's needed by town meeting, we'll take it out with two-thirds votes, but that's off in the fall. Right now, we're asking for two things, Articles 21 and 22, which is the establishment of 21 would be an establishment of fund for the natural green fields, and Article 22 is a revolving establishment fund for the synthetic field. Revolving accounts provide additional maintenance of the field and not within the DPW budget. If you remember in the past few years, unfortunately, we've cut the DPW budget in several areas, and one of the results are maintenance is not getting done as fast as it should have. It's gone from a proactive to a more of a reactive thing to keep the fields operational. We believe that with additional funds, we can make our fields much better, safer, and more enjoyable for our children and adults to play in. The other one would be to stabilize capitalization funds. As you know, our stabilization funds in the capital are very tight in the next several years, and this would be a way of subsidizing field improvements. And it would allow for emergency repairs, for seen repairs that not in the budget to be done in the current year. Funding for these accounts, well, would unfortunately have to create fees. These fees are created by the Board of Selectmen. The fees have been voted by the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and these fees will be implemented in the fall of 2012. Now, you may ask what these fees are. These fees are based upon tiers. While the first tier would be for Winchester Recreation and Public School Programs, there basically are no charges for these Tier One, except for field lighting at Gin Field. Tier Two would be Winchester residents, including Winchester-based youth teams and single-use tier, single-use day permits by residents. The head count for the youth sports teams is $7 per person. There again, they would also pay $30 an hour for Gin Lights if they need them. For the turf field, there'd be a $125 charge. For the turf field and the press box, it would be a $150 charge. Tier Three is for non-Winchester residents, including Winchester organizations with non-resident participation. That would be $50 per person per season. It'd be $45 an hour for the use of the baseball field, plus $30 for the administration fee. There'd be $125 an hour for the turf field, plus a $40 personnel fee, and then it would be $200 for the press box and turf field. Tier Four is for Winchester adult sports or casual users. Non-permanent light fee is $20, $20 per hour. Permanent light fee is $45, $30 administration charge. The turf field, again, is $125 with a $40 maintenance fee, and turf and press box is $200 an hour. Tier Five is for tournaments. That will be $125 an hour for a green field, $65 per hour for lights on Gin if needed, and $30 administration fee. There would also be, again, $125 per hour for the turf field, plus a $40 maintenance fee. Turf field and press box would be $200. In very small print, it describes what are personal uses and the estimate of how they came to get to the income levels. The general revenue, basically, from the green field is about $52,000 annually, estimated. Possible areas of maintenance that are needed on our fields are, as you see, deep time acceleration. I'm not sure what that is, but they tell me we need it. There's sprinkler system repairs, there's drainage issues, there's bathroom supplies, there's painting of baseball and tennis courts, scoreboard signage, grading, and miscellaneous expenses. Right now, if the DPW had $69,300, they would spend it on these items. Now, obviously, these things cannot be done in the first year, but they will be done over time. The estimated revenue from the turf field for the fall would be about $10,000. Spring season, we estimate approximately $32,000. And the summer season is about $56,000, or a total of about $98,500. Estimated turf field issues are repairs to the bleacher, repair and replacing of fencing as damaged, signage, grooming and maintenance of synthetic carpet, painting of the lines in synthetic carpet, possibly scoreboard or sound system repairs, miscellaneous of $6,000, a turf custodian of $25,000. That estimate is approximately $52,000 annually. We estimate a replacement of the carpets of somewhere between $20 and $40,000 annually going into a fund to be paid, to help subsidize the purchase of the carpet when it's needed. We estimate repairs from the, we estimate it revenue would be about $92,500 from the turf field. Now, why do you ask a revolving account? Because it works very simply. This account would be managed ultimately by the town manager, who's the chief procurement officer. It would be reviewed monthly by the town controller in our reporting system. It is also subject to outside audits. There would be an annual review of the finance committee, and most important, there would be an annual review of view of the town meeting members at the fall, at the spring town meeting. Why do we need these things? One of the things is to make our fields better, safer, and more enjoyable for the residents of the community. Couple pictures of the fields. You can see wear areas at Lynch that just normal wear and tear, and something has to be done every year. Mullen Field, if you remember, last year we had a sinkage problem. DPW filled that, graded it, and made it playable. Problem at Mullen, it was a stump dump at one time, and it's believed this settlement issue is still going on with the decay of stomps rotting. That's Mullen fixed. Chacha Field, as you know, we're going to go forward with major improvements there, along with the high school reconstruction. Leonard Field, while it's a good field, it does have some drainage issues, and we'd like to address it. One of the things these funds do is address major maintenance items before they become capital items. If we don't let a maintenance item, if we let a maintenance item go, it becomes a capital item. It costs us more money in the long run. Norton Stadium, everybody should be proud of this. It's what we did for the community. Now, these revolving funds, like I say, they're accountable. Everybody here, they're open, they can be viewed, and they'll be accountable. They will be expended by the town manager, who's the chief procurement officer, and I would ask for your support in these articles. It's crucial to our town to maintain our fields, and this is a very good option of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
The finance committee voted unfavorable action on the establishment of these revolving funds.
We're just doing one or both?
I'm sorry?
Is this on both or just one?
No, we're doing them one at a time.
Okay. So on this revolving fund, we do support the Field Management Committee's efforts to establish user fees and to use those fees to directly support the maintenance of the fields. Our objections related to the type of fund that is being created and the lack of transparency in current and future sources and uses of funds to maintain the fields. First, the revolving funds seem to combine unanticipated and planned expenses. We question why the unplanned expenses are not submitted to the FinCom's reserve fund and the planned expenses were not proposed as part of the town manager's budget. Second, combined operating and capital expenses. The DOR does not recommend using a 53-and-a-half revolving fund for capital expenditures, and we believe a stabilization fund would be a better vehicle to accumulate funds for capital items. It can also be difficult for the finance committee to have visibility into the spending on revolving funds. We have several of them in town, and our experience has been mixed. We changed the Recreation Department from a revolving fund to an enterprise fund in 2011 in order to have more visibility of and prior review of its expenditures. Additionally, we do not have a clear picture of all revenues and all expenses for the town's fields. Finally, there are many cases in which a department or board would prefer direct access to its fees, including the library for its late fees, cemetery, transfer station, et cetera. We do not believe it would be best to remove all of these funds from the budgeting process.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, yes, sir?
I believe the Palmer tennis courts are clay, they weren't included in this?
The gentleman's question is, he understands that the tennis courts are clay, and why aren't they included in this? Mr. Johnson?
Tennis courts are not under the direction of the Field Management Committee. We didn't really want to compound an issue, so we didn't include the tennis courts at Palmer. We do include the tennis courts outside of Palmer and the basketball courts.
Okay. Mr. Swanton?
Mr. Moderator, the last sentence in the motion that talks about the funds remaining in the account is not something we've seen in the other revolving account motions. Is there some particular reason that's there?
The gentleman's point, question is, is that, he said unlike our other revolving accounts, correct me if I'm wrong, unlike other revolving accounts, we're leaving the money in the account at the end of the year. Mr. Keviney?
These, both of these articles are going to be voted as 53 E and a Half funds. Those funds allow all of the funds to stay in that fund and not revert back to the general fund on a yearly basis. Annually, Town Meeting has to vote the spending limit, but the funds remain in the fund at all times unless Town Meeting elects to close the fund out and revert it to the general fund.
On a follow-up, Mr. Swanton?
This is an unnecessary.
I can't hear you. Please stand when, please rise when you talk.
So, my understanding that from the girls' interns, this is an unnecessary language in this.
The gentleman points out that he thinks this is an unnecessary piece of language in that motion.
I think it just further explains what happens to the funds at the end of each year. They stay within the fund, but it is part of the Massachusetts law.
You need a mic, sir?
The thing I'm really trying to make sure is, this fund will be treated the same way as the other revolving funds we just voted.
Right. The archival, the Board of Health, and the energy are all three 53 E and a Half funds. Both of these will also be the same kind of fund.
Thank you. Further, gentleman up back, yes, sir? Yes, one down. Yes, sir.
Town meeting members, thank you for having the opportunity to speak on behalf of the largest youth sports organization in this town. I'm standing here in front of you four years after I was standing here as well to, as a proponent of the turf field that we got built in this town, which I think has become an incredible asset to this town. And I want to thank our town for making that happen. Our fields are still in, our fields are still in deplorable situation, and we're hoping as a, as the Winchester Soccer Club, to improve all the fields that are in this town. As you, most of you are maybe aware, we are trying to build a whole new set of fields as part of Winchester Community Park, and if you're not aware of that, then I urge you to go to our website, winchastercommunitypark.org. However, tonight, I'm standing here somewhat reluctant, but very determined to tell you that the Winchester Soccer Club, as the largest sports organization, is not in favor of the warrants 21 and 22 as proposed by the Field Management Committee. While we strongly support the need to maintain and adequately ration Winchester's valuable playing fields among all Winchester users, we have significant concerns regarding the specifics in the proposal being put forward by the current Field Management Committee. We came to this conclusion not easily, but after participating in many meetings with them about this issue and attempting to have our voice heard and suggestions implemented. I think it's very important to state upfront that the Winchester Soccer Club has a long history of contributing to the care and maintenance of town fields whenever asked, and we will continue to do so under the construct of a reasonable plan. Our concerns are, one, there has been no clear description of how the monies raised from the field permit policy will be used. We have heard a widely varying and inconsistent list of users of the funds, including salaries --
That wasn't me.
-- salaries for town employees.
I think we have a mic problem. Mine, too. Wait a minute, we're bringing you a mic, I think.
This, you know, this one is not, this one is out, too.
I'd give you mine, but mine's not working either.
No, no, I'm good at that.
Oh, wait a minute, they won't be able to hear you, so.
We are very concerned that without a clear and very strong commitment, there is the risk that the monies that are raised by, as proposed in this proposal, will never actually end up getting spent on the field improvement that's so badly needed. I think the finance committee just told you that as well. We are also concerned that the Winchester Soccer Club will shoulder an undue amount of the financial burden under the current proposed plan. As proposed, Winchester Soccer Club will contribute about 60% of the annual fees while receiving only 40% of the field time. We have a majority of girls that are members of our club. As a matter of fact, we are the largest, we have the largest membership of any youth organization in this town. organization in this town of girls, and that's what we stand for. How do we go? Where do you go from here? What are the proposed solutions? While our efforts to work cooperatively with the Field Management Committee proved fruitless, we have been talking to others in Town Hall, including our new town manager, Mr. Richard Howard, about a workable solution. And I think there are some good signs. Given all the above concerns, we are strongly advocating that the plan be abandoned as proposed, and that the Winchester Soccer Club and all the other interested parties work with the Finance Committee to develop a new usage-based model that more fairly allocates fees between the using youth organizations based on actual field usage. We also strongly advocate that separate field...
I think the mic is on.
We also strongly advocate that separate field stabilization funds be created to house the monies, rather than the low-visibility, poorly-transparent revolving accounts as currently proposed. Tonight, we're asking that the Town Meeting will make a motion to indefinitely postpone warrants 21 and 22 for further study by all parties involved. And again, I want to reiterate one more time, it's important to state that the Winchester Soccer Club has a very long history of contributing to the care and maintenance of the town fields whenever asked, and we will continue to do so under the construct of a reasonable plan. Thank you.
Before you, before you sit down, I'm sorry, your time ran out, but if you want to repeat any of that now, because you were talking without a mic, and I could see people up back that could not hear you, so if you wanted to just do a capsule of what you said when the mic was off, if you want...
I think, I think I've said...
Pardon?
I think I've said what, Mr. Moderator, what I wanted to be, if you like me to, I can sit down and...
Yeah, I want you to sit down in case someone's got a question for you. Yes, sir? Gentleman up there?
Mr. Moderator, I don't know if my question should be directed to the Finance Committee or Mr. Kevany, as I was paying careful attention to Mr. Johnson's presentation, looking at the expected annual revenues. And as I read the motion language, there is a limit to these accounts. I think I saw that the projected annual revenue would be higher than the limits established in these accounts. If I saw that, if I'm reading that correctly, what might then happen in any given year if Town Meeting takes favorable action to revenues that are in excess of the account limit that's in the motion language?
Okay. Mr. Kevany?
There's no limitation on how much revenue can be deposited into these accounts, however, annually Town Meeting will vote a spending limit. Even with that, DOR requires that before any bill is paid out of these funds, funds need to exist in them to cover them. These funds cannot spend in deficit at any time. So even though we may have a $50,000 spending limit, there has to be at least money in the fund to cover every bill that's submitted to my office.
Okay. Further on the question, yes, sir, gentleman over here.
First, Mr. Moderator, are we discussing a motion to indefinitely postpone?
No, the gentleman requested that somebody, he's not a Town Meeting member...
So moved.
Just thank you for interrupting. The, so, it's been moved that this be indefinitely postponed, is this seconded? Okay, the, no, I get the second. Gentlemen, you want to speak still?
Yes, I think it would be a good idea to postpone this, and I, I think that the issue of funding a replacement for the turf field is a central issue. The turf field won by five votes in this body when it did win, and the question of the cost of replacing it every 10 years was one of the critical questions, and that should be something that should be built into any consideration going forward.
Okay, the gentleman up back trying to get me before in the red shirt, yes, sir? Motion on the floor is a motion for indefinite postponement.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Paul Manginaro, and I reside at 11 Pilgrim Drive, Precinct 6. I come before you tonight wearing two hats, one is the president of the Winchester Field Development Council, and the other is the president of the smaller youth group in town, St. James Youth Football and Cheerleading Program. I'd like to first thank this body for your road of confidence on November 7th that allowed the $200,000 allocation of funds towards Phase 2, with the stipulation that our entity, the Winchester Field Development Council, raised $711,000 by June 30th. I hope to come before you, or at least, maybe not in front of you, but hope have a major announcement as far as our victory in a short period of time here. I'm here to talk about the present, not about something or a vote that happened three or four years ago. The fact is, we do have a first-class facility right now down at Knowton Stadium, and we do have fields that are in desperate need of funds to be maintained and renovated. On behalf of our 15 board member, and the majority of our close to 1,500 donors to date, many that I see in this room, I would ask for your support of Articles 21 and 22. Now is the time. To delay anything any further would only mean more delays in the ability for us to maintain these fields. I, for one, and our board have great confidence in the Board of Selectmen, who we've worked with for many years now, the school committee members that we've worked with for many years, and we believe in their talents and their commitment to do the right thing with these funds for all of Winchester. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further on the question, yes, sir, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With all due respect to the soccer club, I think there's many people that pay fees for their kids to play sports, which I'm sure the school committee doesn't like, but that's the economic reality. But here we have a chance to get some money and maintain them, which we can't do under our capital plan. And you've got a transparent group, the selectmen, the school committee, the DPW head, the recreation director, the athletic director, and three appointed Winchester residents, under the control of the town manager. So I think to delay would be probably to delay $50,000 in improvements over a year, and I don't think we can afford to do it, and I don't think we owe it to the kids. Thank you.
Further on the question, Mrs. Krieger?
Yes, I have really just a question of procedure here. I'm supportive of the general notion of using fees to, in order to supplement the repairs, which I know are multiple.
Could you speak into the mic more?
Yes, which I know are multiple in need. However, I'm a little confused here, just because when we're talking about the revolver, the revolving account, and then, as I understood, Mr. Johnson, that we would then be looking at a stabilization fund, and I presumably, at that point, I'm presuming that the revolving fund would disappear? Is that correct, to be taken over by a stabilization fund?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, as it presently stands, there is just a revolving account.
Speak up, please.
As it presently stands, there is just an revolving account. I plan on this fall, if this passes, to come forward with a stabilization account for fields. That way, at a vote of Town Meeting in the spring, we would take X amount of money out of these accounts and put into a field stabilization account. But that will be, I will bring that forward in the fall if this passes, and it'll be ready for next spring, there'd be a transfer of X amount of dollars into the stabilization fund.
Okay. But at that point, would these revolver, revolving funds be zeroed out and eliminated?
They would be, no, I don't think there'll be, that isn't, I don't know. I really don't, Betsy. I think one of the questions is, it will have to be evaluated, because all revolving accounts should keep some money in it to do something at the fiscal, the beginning of the fiscal year. That has yet to be determined. If you look at the past history on all the revolving, the three we presently have, there is what I call seed money in from year to year. So I would assume that some money would stay in there from year to year.
So, let me see if I can clarify that, because I see some confusion in people's expressions. If we were to pass this revolving fund, in the fall, you're going to bring in a stabilization fund, and at this time, it hasn't been determined whether you would keep, now have two funds, or we would dissolve this and make it into the state...
No, Mr. Moderator, my intention would be, I think we need the two revolving funds annually. However, once the money is in the account, I think this would be a good way to have a forced savings account, would be a stabilization account, but we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, because that would be in the fall. Right now, the money would stay in the account.
Yes, Ms. Krieger, on a follow-up?
Thank you. If I may, I have to say, I'm, I am just a trifle uncomfortable here, and frankly, I would really prefer...
Would you speak up a little?
Yes, I'm sorry. I would really prefer to see a more fully-developed plan for this. I'm supportive of the notion of it, but I would really like to see a more fully-developed financial notion of the handling of it.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Natalee, motion on the floor is indefinite postponement.
That was one of my questions. It's indefinite or time certain?
Indefinite.
Which kills it.
Yes, if we indefinitely postponed it, it would, it would kill it unless somebody tried to bring it up again before the end of this Town Meeting.
But we might see it again if, if it is indefinitely postponed, we might see it again in the fall.
Yeah, you could see it in a special Town Meeting in June, too, anytime. When you indefinitely postpone it, it's done in this Town Meeting, the next Town Meeting it could come up.
I got it. I have a question through you, please.
Yes, sir.
To Selectman Johnson. I think I heard you say that among the expenses, there was a turf custodian for $25,000?
Mr. Johnson?
An approximate $25,000, you're correct. One of the issues we're having is the management of the turf field. If we open up for, for other groups, we'd like someone to open the turf field, open the press box, watch it, make sure the trash is picked up, make sure the PA system isn't as loud, isn't too loud for the neighbors in the Manchester Road area, close everything, and make sure this facility is secure when it's done.
We need a new employee with benefits and retirement and healthcare to do that?
No.
Don't we have a, an employee now?
No, this would be, this would be an existing employee that would get overtime.
I think it's rather absurd. Can't hear you, Mr. Natalee.
I think a $25,000 turf custodian is kind of ridiculous.
Mr. Natalee, these are estimates that we put together with...
Excuse me, excuse me, one at a time, this is not a debate one-on-one.
Seems like an unnecessary expense, thank you.
Mr. Natalee, these are estimates that we put together that we thought fair and equal...
Mr. Johnson, you're out of order.
Okay.
This is not, yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Chris Lunskey, I'm the chairman of the school committee. I'm also a member of the Field Management Committee. I'm also a parent in town, a child in a sports organization. I can tell you, from the amount of time that's been put into this, there's unnecessary confusion. What we're asking as far as revolving fund is necessary, as a parent, I want to know that the money that I'm giving is going to stay in the fund that's meant for the fields. The revolving fund ensures that. I don't believe that there's a fear that they'll be mismanaged. We have a fine group of town employees whose responsibility is to utilize the systems we have, immune assistance, we invested a lot of money in, that produces incredible reports that allows other departments, including the school committee, to a great job of managing expenditures to a level of detail that's far greater than anything you would get at some other organizations. And I don't think that it's necessary for us to put things off because people are sort of unhappy with the results that came out of a long debate, a fair debate, and a debate that was actually present as many people got their opinions voiced and heard. And I think that the stabilization component of it is a little bit of a concern that you shouldn't carry a significant balance for something that will ultimately become an investment back into the carpet itself. But as a person that participated in these events, and participated in the discussion of when we set up the fund to actually provide the field, that was critical. We don't want that to come back to Town Meeting, to ask us to pay for that. We want some other method, including methods of getting additional revenues to provide the money to replace that carpet. So I see this as an incredible solution, and this will be something that the Town Meeting can revisit, and we can tweak this thing. We'll tweak the amount that we charge for fees, we'll tweak it based on the utilization, we'll tweak it on the members of the committee and the representation they want, so I recommend against postponing this.
Further on the question, Mr. Howley, and then Mr. Swanton?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. The question before Town Meeting, of course, has to do with the establishment of the revolving funds. It's a tried and true method, I think, for us to, in fact, focus and account for funding, and it would be the same in this instance. But I think it's important for Town Meeting to know that as to the fees themselves, those are within the control of the Board of Selectmen, we've already approved those fees. Now, I will say that although, as has been noted, there was a great deal of participation on the part of the soccer association, and I sometimes feel like the soccer association next to the hospital is like the largest entity we have here in Winchester. But their voice has been heard, and I think it's true that the board will consider, as we go forward, any further information we have with regards to the fees that have been set. But this is part of our overall effort to comprehensively maintain our fields. We've made considerable investments in them over the last several years. This is a plan to do something about that, and I think it's important that we go forward, we make this step. Hopefully, we're going to find soon that the investment the Town Meeting made, not only in the multi-turf surface field, but in the track, will soon bring value to the town, and this will be a way for us to maintain those investments that we've made. So I encourage Town Meeting to support this.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, ma'am. Please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A question for the Field Management Committee through you. The fees that we're charging are new fees, or are there currently fees being charged to these organizations? That's a little unclear to me. And then, do we have some perspective on whether that is, whether other comparable communities are doing something similar in this regard?
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
These fees are instituted by the Board of Selectmen. They will be fees that would go towards the town. Now, I don't know if the soccer club has their own fee structure for maintenance, or any other clubs, but these fees would go to the town.
Follow-up question?
But these are new...
Please, excuse me, please rise.
I'm sorry. So these fee, these organizations are not presently paying fees to use these fields? I guess that's my question.
No, these fees will begin for...
These are new fees?
These fees will begin for the September sports, for the fall sports season.
Yes, ma'am. One second, he'll be around.
I'm always concerned when I hear the Finance Committee recommend against a motion, and I'm not familiar with the difference between an enterprise fund and the 59 E and a half revolving fund that they're proposing. And I understand that the Finance Committee feels that there is less transparency in a revolving fund. Through you, Mr. Moderator, could somebody explain that?
Yes, Finance Committee? It's Chloe?
We were comparing it to, so when we have a revolving fund, the, and part of this might just be our own process, but, but the entity that has a revolving fund can spend up to that limit of the fund, and we don't always get in advance what they're planning to spend it on. And sometimes, they, well, as it happened this year, you know, a fund came, one of the revolving funds came right up to its balance, and then, all of a sudden, we needed to raise the balance from the fund, because we didn't have anything to see how much they were spending, or if they were close to the limit, and, and we don't even really know what they're, what it's going to be spent on. So as part of the regular budgeting process for something that doesn't have one of these revolving funds, we have a really detailed breakdown of the planned expenditures, and we go through those with the department heads, and we don't have a similar process for these. Now, we could potentially change our process, and that's something that we should do, but it's still... it's still, we don't, we still don't have to appropriate, so it seems different to us.
Thank you. There's a gentleman up back, and then Mr. Swan, and then I think we're ready to vote.
My name is Patrick Gill from 32 Nathaniel Road. I represent not only Winchester youth lacrosse, but also Winchester Papuaano football, the two smallest but fastest-growing sports in the town. I'm also on the Winchester Sports Foundation and the Winchester Field Development Council. I would, it would be a shame if this was postponed indefinitely because with the Winchester Field Development Council, we're just on the verge of raising a million dollars in private funds for these fields and for the track, and now we're going to have to go back and tell everybody, we're not going to maintain it. I think that would be a shame for all those people that I've spent, and all those 15 other people have spent a year, two years, asking these people to donate their money, that we're not going to maintain it. And the two sports that are growing are for the fees. I understand it doesn't match everybody, but when we were on the development meetings, soccer was there, we actually brought down the rate for their feeling. They wanted that done. So it would be a shame to kill it now when we're so close to reaching, and we need that final push, and tonight, if we kill this, I don't think people are going to be too willing to give that money. Thank you.
Mr. Swan.
As a former FinCom member, I understand the FinCom's reluctance on this thing. You really want to have visibility, you really want to be planning ahead. I think that that's the real key word in all this. As Cluey talked about, planned expenditures. If you took a look at most of what was up there, there were some other expenditures, like the turf agent or whatever, I guess that's a different concept, there are other expenditures that might be quote "planned," but there are some in there, you know, you don't know which field is going to have a sinkhole, you don't know which field is going to need something repaired, you don't know what's going to be happening with a bunch of these things. And it really makes sense to have the user fees be plowed back into that and have a vehicle to do this without going through an 18-month budget cycle. We've used that very effectively in the energy management committee because we have these utilities incentives that pop up, and they're only there for four months. We can't go through the whole capital planning process to make it. So we take user fees from the rental of town buildings, we put them in a fund, we look for opportunities for quick payback, we get the approval of the town manager, who's the final arbiter of how that money gets spent and whether a particular expenditure we propose gets happens, and we go with it. I think this can be very, you know, very important way to keep the fields going well and keep some of that money off of the town tax rate. So I really would, I really would ask all of you to defeat the motion to indefinitely postpone it, pass the basic revolving funds. And as Mr. Johnson says, they'll come back with a stabilization proposal for the long-term planning in the future. I also believe the FinCom, we really should come up with a better way of making this more transparent for everybody, because I understand it can be very frustrating to try to see what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for the question. Let me name some tellers, Mr. Leland, Mr. Moore, Mr. Simpson, and Mr. Doucette. Would you please rise and raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear to faithfully perform these duties as tellers to this town meeting?
Do.
Thank you very much. Okay, the question comes on indefinite postponement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'd say the noes have it. A number of no people were having risen, it's declared that the indefinite postponement article fails, we come back to the main motion. Are you ready for the main motion, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, this also takes a majority vote. And this is, the motion is in your book, but it's moved in second. The town voted to establish a revolving fund, and the amount will be limited to $50,000, and it will be reauthorized at the spring annual town meeting. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. Seeing no objections, the chair declares that that is passed. And that brings us to Article 22. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is the, is a sister article of the one just approved, only this is for the synthetic turf. And the motion here permits the amount of the fund be limited to $80,000, and it also has to be reauthorized, as in the motion, at the spring annual town meeting next year. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
We voted unfavorable on this one as well, for the same reasons, and we also were not certain about why we need a turf guy.
I'm not sure I understood that, but I hope you did. Are you ready for the question, ladies and gentlemen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Chair is in doubt. This is on the synthetic turf. All those in favor, all those in favor of this motion, please rise, and the tellers will count.
Ten.
Ten.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. All those opposed, please rise.
Six.
Six.
Five.
Five.
Ten.
Ten.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Eighty-eight, and having voted in the affirmative, thirty-five in the negative, the quiet crowd won. And so the motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, we usually take our recess at nine, but we, the next article is going to take some time, I suspect, and that is the article on the, let me make sure I'm right here, Winning Farm. That might take a little time, so it's, if, there's no objection, I, we'll recess the meeting, and we'll get back here at nine o'clock.
So you're going to do Article 23. Yeah, okay. Let me get my glass.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to WinCam's coverage of the third session of spring town meeting. I'm Alan Ayden. Let's see what we've had covered tonight. In this third session, we opened the meeting with a tribute to the Winchester Girl Scouts for their duty to town meeting, year after year, in providing break-time refreshments that they are probably enjoying right now, and a tribute to a couple of the girls who have, are 12th graders and have some outstanding achievements. So we moved into Article 17, which was to establish a stabilization fund for special education needs within the school department. We heard from Chris Linsky, the chairman of the school committee. He said we, the town needed to have a fund for unexpected costs of special education that sometimes would pop up in the middle of a year, like out-of-district transport for special-needs students. He said the fund would be a stabilization fund that would use favorable balances, in other words, when a particular budget item came in under budget, some of those balances would be used to reimburse this fund. The finance committee supported that, the establishment of that fund, there was a unanimous vote to establish it, and the second motion within Article 17 was to fund it in the amount of $200,000 out of the existing school department budget. So as was pointed out, it was no additional expenditure for the town, it came out of the existing school budget. Article 18, and several articles beyond that, were to establish revolving funds, or to reauthorize revolving funds, I should say. Article 18 was the revolving fund for the Winchester Archival Center, not to exceed $5,000. In other words, sale of items from the archival center would be, go back into this fund to support the center. Article 19, same thing, to reestablish a revolving fund or to continue a revolving fund for energy use within town. Fees for use of town buildings would go back into a fund not to exceed $80,000 to be used for projects to create energy savings within the town. We heard from Selectman Tom Howley, who said that over the course of the last few years, the town has saved over $3 million in energy expenses through installation of energy-saving equipment. That was authorized by town meeting. Another revolving fund voted to, town meeting voted to continue the Board of Health revolving fund for clinics, fees and such collected for clinics would be used to do such things as flu and vaccination clinics. There was a $60,000 limit on that, that fund, that was passed. Most of the discussion up till this point went on, was on Articles 21 and 22. Now, they were proposals for new funds, two new funds, a revolving fund for the grass fields in the town, grass play fields in the town. This is put forth by the field management committee, an amount not to exceed $50,000 in this. Selectman Jim Johnson was the proponent. He said this, this fund would stabilize the maintenance of the fields and provide for emergency repairs for fields, and he showed some pictures, one of which was of a sinkhole that developed in Mullen Field, to illustrate his need for emergency repairs. He detailed the fees that would be, new fees that will be charged for use of the fields beginning in, with the fall sports season this year. They estimated would bring in about $98,000 a year. He also said as part of the income, $40,000 a year would be put aside for replacement, I'm sorry, that would be on the next article, I got a little ahead of myself here. We saw some slides of the fields in town, some of the fields that, and their need for maintenance. He commented that regular maintenance on these fields would reduce the need for capital expenses on the fields. The finance committee, however, objected. They felt that the expenses should not be combining capital and operating expenses, and they felt there was a lack of transparency and accountability for items that did not go through the regular budget process. The Winchester Soccer Club, spokesman for the Winchester Soccer Club, also said the soccer club was not in favor, that they felt the field management council was not receptive to their concerns. He said there was no clear use of the funds, in their feeling. He said that the soccer club would be assessed about 60% of the fees for about 40% of the use of the fields. He suggested use a stabilization fund and not a revolving fund. Now, in response to that, we heard from Jim Johnson, who said it is the intent, after their establishment of the revolving fund, to come back to fall town meeting to implement a stabilization fund also for these fields. Paul Meganarrow, head of the field development council, urged support. Steve Powers, town meeting member Steve Powers, also urged support, saying that the use of the funds was going to be controlled by, in his words, "a transparent group," meaning the town manager and other people who would be overseeing the expenditures of these fields. Chris Linsky, who is also chairman of the school committee, speaking as a parent, he said that there will be very detailed reports coming out of this, of the expenditures from a very capable group. And he also said, as a parent, he wanted to make sure that the money he spends, the fees he spends to send, have his kids play on fields, go back to support those fields. Another member of the audience, who is a member of the field development council, he said that the council has raised almost $1 million in private funding for the fields, and he believes that kind of funding would be in jeopardy if the town voted not to put forth the money to maintain the fields once they've been, once they've been improved. So there was a motion on the floor partway through this to indefinitely postpone it. That motion failed, and then the, the main motion was approved on a voice vote, which moved on to Article 22, which was actually the same article, the same type of fund, with a different cap and for the artificial turf fields. And there was discussion there that said that about $40,000 a year out of that fund was being set aside for the anticipated 10-year replacement of the artificial turf at Knowlton Stadium. That, so this fund had an $80,000 limit, and as all these funds are, they'd be reauthorized annually by the spring town meeting. Initially, there was some question on the vote, on a voice vote, so it was, there was a headcount, and Article 22 passed by a vote of eighty-eight to thirty-five. So that's where we stand at the moment. Town meeting is in recess for about 10 more minutes. We will resume our coverage at that point, which time we'll move on to Article 23. The moderators expressed confidence that town meeting will wrap up its annual spring town meeting session tonight, so we invite you to stay tuned, and we'll recap at the end of the show, at the end of the meeting. was being set aside for the anticipated 10-year replacement of the artificial turf at Knowlton Stadium. That, so this fund had an $80,000 limit, and as all these funds are, they'd be reauthorized annually by the spring town meeting. Initially, there was some question on the vote, on a voice vote, so it was, there was a head count, and Article 22 passed by a vote of 88 to 35. So, that's where we stand at the moment. Town meeting is in recess for about 10 more minutes. We will resume our coverage at that point, which time we'll move on to Article 23. The moderators expressed confidence that town meeting will wrap up its annual spring town meeting session tonight, so we invite you to stay tuned, and we'll recap at the end of the show, at the end of the meeting.
Town meeting will now be in order. Please take your seats. For those that are interested, the Celtics are leading 47 to 39.
What are they doing?
Two to seven.
Seven to two.
Four seven.
And the Sox are losing seven to two. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we turn now to Article 23, to see if the Board of Selectmen be authorized to exercise the town's option to purchase, purchasing two parcels of land costing for $100, less than $100 in Winchester from the Winning Farm. It's moved and seconded that the Board of Selectmen are authorized to exercise the town's option to purchase two parcels of land containing 15,142 square feet and 69,627 square feet, respectively, for consideration of less than $100 from Winning Home, Inc., under the terms set forth in the First Amendment of Option Agreement, dated July 17, 1996. The above parcels are more fully described in a plan of land in Winchester, Mass., dated July 7, 1999, provided by George Zambros, the town engineer, on file with the town engineer's office. That's a motion of the Board of Selectmen, the chair recognizes Mr. Fontana.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in favor to support this article. I'd like to introduce Town Council Wade Welch, who will make a brief presentation on this article, and he has a few other members who might speak as well, experts on the topic.
Mr. Welch, we'll consider you to be the prime speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have Mr. Rich Dougherty, the town's LSP, who I'll also ask to speak, but I hope we'll be able to confine our remarks for 10 minutes in total.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this is a piece of ancient history, which hopefully we'll come to a conclusion tonight. In the fall of 1996, the, the town became aware that Winning Home, Inc. was going to sell its farm up at the, off of Thornbury Road and off of, it's off of Lexington Street in Woburn. And so, the town exercised its right of first refusal to buy the Winning Farm property, and we entered into a purchase and sale agreement for approximately 40 acres. After we, we entered into the purchase and sale agreement, but prior to the purchase, the town conducted, as almost every land buyer does, its due diligence, including a Phase 1 21E. And also, it became aware that there was reports from Goldberg Zion relating to this property, basically the Woburn portion of the property, dating back to 1990, 1985, which indicated that this had been, let's say, resident, no, commercial building material had been dumped on the site in order to build a track, horse track. So, the town, having started its Phase 1, then commissioned a Phase 2, and after commissioning the Phase 2, came to the conclusion that the site did in fact contain substantial building debris, and therefore, that the town was going to exclude from the purchase a certain parcel, part of the parcel. And so, the excluded area is shown here as lots 2 and lots 3, and it contains approximately 84,000, 84,000 square feet of land. The town, in fact, did not purchase this property, but did obtain an option to purchase this so-called excluded area, once the DEP site remediation requirements had been accomplished. And so, that was in 1999, and I'm pleased to report that on May 17 of 2011, DEP approved the, the closure report, the certificate, they issued a certification report, that all questionable material had been removed from the site. And record notice of the DEP approval was filed on July 19, 2011, which stated in applicable part that no final cap or cover has been installed because all the solid waste has been removed, is no longer part of the former landfill. So, that's the history. So, now we turn to what's the benefit of the town? And that 84,000 square feet is part of an existing conservation path that exists right now, and it's shown there. It's also proposed to be part of a larger conservation system, and you can see the proposed trails. This is off the Thornbury, if you look at the bottom of the slide, that's Thornbury Road. Up to your left is Lexington, up at the top is, is the Woburn area, and it's, it's proposed to be part of a larger conservation area. The other benefit to the town is that the town will maintain control of the area for an indefinite period, can, will keep it as open space, and so, that's the current plan. Now, what's the legal framework? I come to you before you tonight. First of all, notwithstanding anything you've heard, this is not a 21E site. It's not a hazardous waste site, but it's a solid waste site. That's good and bad. What that means is that the DEP does indeed, and has confirmed, that the materials that were removed were basically building debris materials. But that also means, because it was not a 21E site, that the DEP sign-off does not act as a complete eraser of all liability for someone who later acquires the property. Instead, the town's liability upon purchase would be... Oh, oh yeah, here's the other proposed path, but, part of the larger trail system, but I need the other one now, please. No, I want 17. This is the basis of the town's proposed liability, because it's going to be maintained as an open space. The town's liability would be for willful, wanton misconduct on behalf of the town in its control of this property. So, that's the, the standard of review. And so, everybody says, well, what is the possible risk here? All right? And that's, that's the question that I opine to the Board of Selectmen, that here's the, here's the scenario, you can always have a scenario, and if the cleanup was not done correctly, and there was still asbestos present at the site, which became ambient, somebody could make a claim that the town acted wantonly in taking ownership of the property that still contained hazardous materials. And that is the possible risk. Now, from my point of view, any, in New England, I mean, almost all the land that we have has some risk of hazardous materials. This one, to me, has the least risk of most of the, of most of the land that I've become aware of, because I know, I, I believe that the answer to three key questions can be stated as follows. First, was all the questionable material removed from the Winchester site? The answer, based upon the DEP records and the LSP's confirmation, who you hear from, the answer is yes. All the fill material in the so-called excluded area was removed. Two, was there any new material bought to the site that was not clean residential quality fill? The answer to that question is no. The third question is, was there testing done after the fill was removed? And extensive testing was done after the removal. The testing showed that the residential soil standards, the most strict standards had been, were met after the removal event. Now, notwithstanding that, when the Conservation Commission went up to inspect the property under their order of conditions, they saw that there was some, still some fill on the site. This was removed at the request of the Conservation Commission, and subsequently, once that was done, DEP had issued a report saying that since all the fill was removed, there was no further post-closure message required by DEP. So, based upon that information, I suggest to you that favorable action should be taken on this motion. I do have Mr. Rich Dougherty, who has been hired by the town's LSP, as the town's LSP. Incidentally, his name was also brought up in the last meeting, because he's done the DEP post-closure work for the town, and also the Lincoln School, no, the McCall School post-closure work for the town. So, if I might, Mr. Dougherty?
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Richard Dougherty. I'm a professional engineer, and I've been a licensed site professional, meaning I have a license from the state to do investigation and cleanup of hazardous waste sites. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I have a slide presentation that I'll try to go through quickly. It starts out with a couple of photos of the site as it exists today, and then a little bit of the chronology that is going to repeat. Okay, let's see if I can get this going. Okay. So, this is the site as it looks today. This, this line of stones that we can see here, here, this is the, the town... This line of stones that we can see here, yeah, this is the town line between Woburn and Winchester. Woburn is on the left, Winchester is on the right. And this is the way, this is after all the soil removal has been done. So, here's a plan of the entire area that was filled back in the late 70s and early 80s. This portion here is all in Woburn, these are the lots we're talking about today. And this is the town line between Woburn and Winchester. So, as I said before, this is the line of rocks that shows where the town line is. This is all Winchester on the right and Woburn on the left. Same view, just showing part of the cart path, this is an access road to get to the cart path. A view looking from the other direction, you see the line of rocks there, so this is all Winchester land, looking a bit uphill. And this is a portion of the cart path as it leaves the site to the east. So the nature of the fill material, as it was described in a 2000 report, I won't read the whole thing, but the important part is that it contained asphalt, brick, and concrete, which they call ABC, soil, there was a lot of soil mixed in with this material, reinforced concrete, wood, clothing, et cetera, you can read the description up there, but the majority of the material consists of ABC, basically, construction debris. So I'll go through this timeline kind of quick, and repeat some of what Wade went through. But the filling started in the late 70s, early 80s. There were studies done in 1985, and as part of that 1985 study, they interviewed 40 contractors and trucking companies, and concluded that the data did not indicate that the materials brought there were going to cause an adverse environmental impact. Well, that was back in 1985, and there was a lot of regulation changes since then. The next line is 1996, when there was a new set of regulations in place, and there were things that were called reportable concentrations. And there was testing done for the town of Winchester, and they found TPH, TPH is petroleum hydrocarbons, oils, basically, metals, and something called PAH, and PAH are compounds that are mostly products of combustion. So when you have ash, when you have asphalt, they give you PAH materials. So, there were things in that, in the waste, in Winchester, that had oils, metals, and PAH above reportable concentrations. So, they had to be reported to the state, and they were. In 1999, DEP and the site owners agreed to regulate this site as a solid waste site, rather than a hazardous waste site, based on the information they had. They basically agreed that it was more like a landfill than a hazardous waste site. Next line, there was a corrective action plan submitted in 2000. It proposed the removal of all soils greater than RCS1 standards. And what those are, are the residential standards, those are the most strict standards that the state has. DEP approved that plan in 2002, and in November 2007 to June 2008, 67,000 tons of soil were removed, and also, 673 truckloads of debris, that would be the construction demolition waste, were also removed. And while they were doing this excavation, they took air samples from the perimeter of the area, and also had one person wearing a monitor for asbestos. I'm sorry, I think I skipped something, didn't I? I'm sorry. In 1999, there was an investigation done, where they found asbestos in a sample, in the Winchester portion of this property. They found 2 percent, does that mean I'm done?
Yeah, do you, Rich, more time, sir? You can have five minutes more.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So they found 2 percent of asbestos in one of the 11 samples, a trace of asbestos, which is less than 1 percent in six samples, and none detected in four samples. So, the corrective action plan was approved, all this material was taken out in 2007, 2008. 762 air samples were taken for asbestos while this construction was going on, and none was detected in the air. And that is an important finding to me, because it shows that when this material was disturbed, it did not yield any asbestos to the air that could be measured. Okay, moving ahead to 2010, DEP approved that cleanup that was done in '07 and '08, and said that the site was at that point suitable for residential development. But they said, because there was still some waste left, even though it met residential standards, that the owner would have to do post-closure work, which means continued monitoring. And they would have to do that unless the remaining fill was removed. So in 2010, late 2010, they removed 23,000 tons of additional material. So this is material beyond what is needed for a residential cleanup. And that was approved by DEP in May 2011, as Wade mentioned. So, this is just basically a plan showing the different cells of the area. Here's the Winchester portion, here's the Woburn portion, and each one of these cells, there were samples taken for a variety of compounds, volatile organics, semi-volatile organics, oils, PAH, and they continued the excavation until every one of those tests met residential standards. That's basically what I have, but if there are more questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Thank you, sir. Further on the question. Just a second, we have to get a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Sorry about this. I lost my place, okay. The Finance Committee recommended favorable action. The DEP has given the certificate of closure, which indicates that there's no further remediation needed, and the cost to the town for this asset is $1.
Can you tell me what the vote of the Finance Committee was?
It was unanimous.
Thank you. Further on the question. Mr. Whitehead.
Jim Whitehead, Precinct 7, and Chairman of the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has followed the cleanup of this site extensively. A lot of the additional land material that was removed, that was mentioned by the LSP, was removed at the request of the Conservation Commission, just to assure us that we were down to native soils and all fill had been removed. In addition, the Conservation Commission required the owners of the property to replace the trees that were removed or damaged in the course of the, thing you saw, the trees in the picture that they showed, the newly planted trees, there's over 100 new trees there, and the Conservation Commission recommends favorable action on this. We see no, we know no further risk.
Further on the question. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Moderator, my question is that often, we have some indication, correct indication about how we want to use a property that we acquire in the future, but then often, within six months, a year, our plans change. If there are wetlands resources on this area, is there any proposal to put a formal conservation restriction on this land?
Mr. Welch?
The original plan, which was presented to town meeting back in 1996, and has been continually talked about at the Selectmen's Table, was in fact, to do with this land precisely what the town meeting did last fall with the Wright Lock Farm, which would be to transfer everything that is not going to be developed to the control of the Conservation Commission. That would be, require a 2/3 vote of this body, but that, you know, all the acreage that is not subject to the development envelope by, I believe it's Salter Real Estate LLP, would be turned over, would be at least moved to be put under the control of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, ready for the question? If you have a follow-up, ma'am?
I am unaware if there are portions of this land that are slated to be developed.
What was the question, Wade?
Mr. Moderator, the question was, the town meeting member indicated she was unaware of that portion of the property that was expected to be developed. And we have a slide that shows that the so-called development envelope, this is the property that Salter Real Estate, Inc. took down in 2006, I believe. It's on this slide, it's proposed Lot 2, area 12.5 acres, and the access to that is off of Thornbury Road, proposed Lot 3. And that property was actually sold with the approval of the town meeting to Salter Real Estate, Inc. in 2006, and it's subject to a special permit, which because of the action of the state legislature, I think has been extended to 2014.
Well, seeing no one else is going to ask it, I feel, I feel I have to ask this question. This parcel, we have 26.9 acres, that is presently conservation-type land, and we have 12.5 acres, which is the Salter property. And I'd like to ask the question, with some liability obviously out there, why are we buying this? I haven't heard why we are buying it. What is the purpose of this?
Mr. Moderator, the purpose of this is to actually gain control of this property and make sure that it remains in the control of the town of Winchester. If this property, if we do not exercise the option, it's possible that Mr. Murray, who was the adjoining land over, can't, could purchase this property, the uses of which he could make of it now are limited. There would be, he could put tennis courts on it, he could put a swimming pool on it. With a special permit, he could put a wireless facility on it, but, you know, who knows?
Which would be taxable property.
Oh, yes, but, I mean, it is a butt, it does a butt Mr. Murray's property directly, so he would have at least some interest in the property. I think the town's interest is to keep it open space in conservation land, and to tie it in with a larger conservation area, you know, as you are well aware, as, from the slide, it's not immediately accessible by car right now, but that could change.
Way up back.
You mentioned that the Winchester portion of this property, oh, Michael Canavan, Precinct 8, the Winchester portion of this property gets a clean bill of health, how about the Woburn portion of this property? Does that get a clean bill of health also? Should we worry about, there's something leaching over into the Winchester side?
Yes, sir. Mike?
Yeah, DEP's approval letter applied to both the Winchester and the Woburn portions of the property.
So they both get the same approval and the same clean bill of health?
I missed the last part, I'm sorry.
So both portions get the same clean bill of health from the DEP?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Leland?
Is Winchester currently collecting on that piece of property?
The question is, what is happening on Lot Number 2, that's the Salter property? If you drive up there, and I did it two weekends ago, see that entrance into Thornbury there? That entrance road is complete, just down to the border of the land, and then there's a trailer there where you can go in, I guess, and talk to people, and there's been, from my visual, look at that, it is dense, dense woods, and there is no activity, and I think the project is stalled, maybe the Selectmen can shed some light on that.
The special permit was extended because of an act of the state legislature, which basically gave a two-year extension to any special permit that fell within a certain time window during the last economic tsunami of 2008, 2009. And my understanding is that since that has been extended, there has been no further work on the Salter development envelope. I believe we are collecting taxes, but I, Mr. McGirl would be more equipped to answer that than myself.
There's a question up back, I can't see who it is, but I see your hand. Yes, sir?
In regards to Mr. Welch, about this property being interest to Mr. Murray, if he puts a structure on there, there is no access from Winchester to service that, so if there's a fire, a need for an ambulance, or something along those lines, there's no road to get to it, and it is, so basically, it's inaccessible, and Woburn cannot service that property. That's number one. And I'm in agreement with you, that I don't see a reason to buy this. There was, there was testing, they did find asbestos, they did find DDT, which leached into the soil. So I would actually recommend that unless we have a real good reason for buying this property, we don't.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Natali? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. Would you ask him in the mic there, sir?
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Can Mr. Welch confirm that the accessibility of that parcel by Mr. Murray to build on any structures on, that he couldn't do it because he didn't have the access from Winchester to, for emergency purposes?
I think that, I would come to the same conclusion, my analysis would differ a little bit. He couldn't build anything on the property because it's zoned SCI, and therefore, the uses are, as I stated. He couldn't, under our current SCI zoning, he couldn't, he couldn't build any structures, and under the overlay district, the independent elderly housing overlay district, there isn't enough acreage to build anything. You need, the minimum acreage under the IEH is much, much more substantial than the 84,000 feet we have here. So, I agree that he couldn't build, but I don't think that the fire issue would be an insurmountable issue.
The, there's actually a drawing, I think, in your handout, that shows that that property cannot have a structure on it. There's a note on the engineering drawing, so the gentleman is correct. So the question comes again, why are we buying it? Marion Crandall?
Yes, question to, I guess, Town Council. Is there any benefit to Winchester, or possibility to Winchester, of having an access road that would open into the land that we currently own? Or would that be not possible in any case?
One of the issues with this property, that I think is important, and one of the reasons is the Conservation Commission wants to see this property preserved... is the Conservation Commission wants to see this property preserved, is that in the location to the left of your screen, in the area, well, let's get to the path. This area right here is a certified vernal pool. It's very much a protected asset under the Massachusetts law. And it requires a significant buffer. This area up in here, and you can see some of the dotted lines, which are the wetland flags. So this property has extensive wetlands. This whole area here is a wet marsh, wet meadow. It's very valuable habitat. And so I think the reason that we should buy it is to protect a lot of very valuable habitat and a very important natural resource.
Thank you, Jim. Further on the question, yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council, Mr. Welch, I have two questions. The first is whether at the time the town acquired the Winning Farm property, this property was held in this format as a legal construct in order to properly remediate the environmental concerns, but that it was part of the consideration that the town paid at the time it acquired the property and consistent with the town's intent that it eventually take title to this. And my second question is, that being the case, have you and the advisors that you've relied upon, including Mr. Dougherty, now concluded that it's commercially reasonable at this time for the town to take title?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When the town chose to exercise its right of first refusal, of course, the right of first refusal extended to all the Winchester property. It was only after the town, you know, stepped into the shoes of the then purchaser, that we commenced our due diligence, which was part of our option agreement. So it was, it was after the town had made a determination to move forward that the major issues regarding the filled area in Winchester emerged. So we actually did a Phase Two investigation with Vertex and made the conclusion that, yes, the land was, needed to be cleaned up, no, the town didn't want to assume the liability of cleaning it up, but three, we'd like to preserve, because it was consistent with the original intent in exercising the option, yes, we would like to preserve the right to buy it when it was clean. And so now, what, 1999, 14 years later, I stand before you and I would like to finish what I started.
Are you ready for the question, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, the question comes on the motion that the Board of Selectmen are authorized to exercise the town's option to purchase the two parcels containing 15,142 square feet and 69,627 square feet. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I should announce this. It's a two-thirds vote. No, it's majority vote according to this. Pardon? Okay, two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. And I declare that more than two-thirds having, have voted, that the motion passes. That brings us to, at one other point, somebody asked a question on that, and Dan McGirl provided the answer, and it came to the, delivered on a yellow piece of paper, but the amount of taxes received by, from the Salters is $30,000. Okay, that brings us to Article 24. And to see if the Town of Winchester will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, sum of money to study access to the current water resource integrity. And the chair has been advised that it's going to be indefinitely postponed. It's moved and seconded that the article be indefinitely postponed. Mr. Bataro.
I will be brief. I have worked with the town manager, assistant town manager, and town staff to come up with a work plan that moves the dialogue forward and the work effort forward to do the studies that this article contemplated. Just very briefly, what are the objectives? Want to really first fill in some gaps in the studies, but I think the starting point appropriate is to actually look at the existing water studies, determine what they cover, what they don't cover. There are a lot of them, there's enough of them that gives the idea that there probably are a few gaps. But what, why do we want to do this? Just get the studies together so that the planning board can really develop a visioning process for the river corridor and for other water bodies, and also to support, grant opportunities for remediation of, and restoration of water bodies if appropriate. Trigger, one of the triggers was this current state of Davidson Park. It's filling in. I don't know if anyone's been up there. Likely from roads sand, but we're not entirely sure. The rate of degradation of the area might be accelerating, and it may be at risk of becoming Davidson Swamp. Last slide. This is picture of Davidson Park from a couple of years ago. That is not the bank. That is in the middle of the river. That is, that is foliage, habitat, trees growing in the middle of the river. It's probably not what was planned. So anyway, with that, be coming back to town meeting, hopefully in the fall, maybe this spring, with a more focused plan of action for this, having assembled the current information. So move for indefinite postponement.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that the Article 25 be indefinitely postponed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, I beg your pardon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available sum of money for a health care trust fund. That's a Board of Selectmen motion, and it's my understanding that they are moving for indefinite postponement. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's moved and seconded that this article be indefinitely postponed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. We turn now to Article 26, to see if the town will accept the provisions of Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20. The first motion is, and this is a Finance Committee motion, there's three of them, three motions. It's moved and seconded that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 32B. And then in your book, there's been a change to Motion Two. Motion Two is moved and seconded that the town appropriate not 500,000, but 250,000. And then in Motion Three, there's just been an insert there, it's moved and seconded that the town will vote to transfer all funds, which total 429,889.47, to the retiree liability trust fund established under Chapter 139 of the Acts of 2002. Ms. Cluey.
Thank you. I would like to remind Town Meeting what this is and why we're concerned about it. Other post-employment benefits are health insurance premiums for retirees, some of whom are on Medicare, some of whom are too young to be eligible and are on the town's Blue Cross Blue Shield and now Harvard Pilgrim Plans. Winchester pays 50% to 90% of these benefits, which are not contractually obligated. In 2004, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASBEE, issued Statement 45 in order to identify these OPEB costs, which were previously not reported by government entities. GASBEE 45 requires governments to disclose, not necessarily fund, OPEB costs. GASBEE realized that most municipalities were completely unaware of the magnitude of this benefit. They believed requiring these disclosures would be a step towards providing intergenerational and taxpayer equity. It is based on a fundamental accounting principle, the matching principle. Retiree health care expenses for current employees are related to current services and should be paid by current taxpayers. Based on the 2011 Buck Consultants' Report, Winchester has a $93 million unfunded liability. This is greater than all of our outstanding debt for the general fund plus unfunded pension liability combined. OPEB is an issue state and really nationwide. Other Massachusetts AAA communities are currently addressing it. The annual required contribution, or ARC, is a moving target. It is the amount necessary to set aside for current employees and to pay down the unfunded liability over 30 years. It is changed from Buck's 2011 report, based on the town switching health care providers. The town is currently underfunding this ARC by over $1.1 million if we fund this appropriation. We would like to be clear that no matter what the vote is here, the town is incurring retiree health care expenses for current employees, we are just deferring the payment of them. This shows the timeline for OPEB analysis and appropriations. Winchester's OPEB was identified at $110 million in the initial report in 2008. Winchester continued to use pay-as-you-go and made token appropriations towards closing the ARC for the next three years, as we were stunned by the magnitude of the problem. Until last spring, when FinCom set a goal to fund the ARC and Town Meeting approved a $250,000 appropriation. This past fall, the town received its updated report from Buck Consulting at 93 million. And the GASBEE 45 Advisory Committee was formed, and they evaluated alternatives that would close the ARC funding gap. This bring town management, the Board of Selectmen and town manager, have committed to provide a comprehensive plan to reform health care plan design, which they will prevent, present to Fall 2012 Town Meeting. This will address the annual required contribution, or ARC, funding gap. It's possible that the Finance Committee would propose to provide additional FY13 funding for this line at that time. And I'll go on the next two motions on the next slide. Motion One creates what's called an Other Post-Employments Benefits Liability Trust under newly revised in July 2011, MGL, Chapter 32B, Section 20. Any fund created under the statute would be in accordance with GASBEE requirements where the compliance of the existing fund is in question. It would allow use of a favorable discount rate when funded, which reduces the reported liability. Motion Two appropriates the FY13 funds and demonstrates Winchester's commitment to resolving this issue to outside investors. Motion Three transfers the balance in the prior OPEB account into the new, if Motion One passes.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, Mr. Marman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Doug Marman, and I was the Selectmen's representative on the GASBEE 45 Advisory Committee that met over the winter. Its job was to try to figure out ways to reduce the OPEB liability. And it focused on ways to reduce the cost of retiree health benefits. If we reduce those costs, we not only reduce this OPEB liability, which is the long-term result of the costs, but we also can avoid costs or save money in the current budget, which gives us some money that we could put into this OPEB fund. Those changes that we discussed are not subject to collective bargaining. Nevertheless, the board believes that the town should discuss these issues with the unions and the retirees to make the implementation as smooth as possible. These discussions will take place in the next six months. We hope that by the Fall Town Meeting, we will have a plan to present to you. That plan will probably be, have some phases in it, a phased approach. Our intention is to ramp up to the annual required contribution over the next few years. Then we'll be on the 30-year schedule to eliminate the liability. The board recommends that we appropriate $250,000 at this town meeting, as, which is the same amount that we appropriated last year. It's a, it symbolizes our continuing commitment to this issue while we work out the longer-range details. So, again, the board recommends favorable action on all three motions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further on the question, ladies and gentlemen. Hearing none. Motion Number One, it's moved and seconded town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts' General Law, 32B, Section 20, to establish a separate fund called Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Motion Two, it's moved and seconded that the town appropriate 250,000 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund established under the Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Motion Number Three, it's moved and seconded that the town vote to transfer all funds, comma, 429,889.47, comma, in the Retiree Health Care Liability Trust Fund established under Chapter 139 of the Acts of 2002. That is the former fund, and we're moving that over. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. That brings us to Article 27, and that's to vote to appropriate 250,000 to the retiree health care fund. This motion, because of the 26 passing, this motion should be indefinitely postponed, because we just took the money out of there. It's moved and seconded that the meeting, that the motion in Article 27 be indefinitely postponed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. To see if the town, Article 28, will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to the General Stabilization Fund in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any other action in relation thereto. One motion requires a two-thirds vote. Moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate from free cash 3,35,304 to the General Stabilization Fund in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts' General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B. And the chair recommends, Mr. Howard, I'm sorry, I don't recommend, I select, but I recommend you.
I'll take your recommendation.
I recommend you be swift.
In November of 2010, the Board of Selectmen adopted an operating reserves policy. And the board feels that an operating reserve policy is an important reflection of the sound fiscal management of the town. I'd like to highlight a few elements of the policy as you consider our request for approval of Article 28. The policy sets a goal of maintaining the town's operating reserves at 10% and not less than 6% of general fund revenues, limiting the amount of free cash used to balance the operating budget to non-recurring expenditures such as one-time capital costs and tax-supported debt service, and annually transferring funds from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund in order to reach the 10% operating reserves target. Your approval of Article 28 will authorize a transfer of 3,35,304 from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund, and will bring the General Stabilization Fund balance to approximately $4,185,000, or approximately 4.7% of the fiscal year '13 net revenue. Together, based on the budget approved by this town meeting, the town's undesignated fund balance and the General Stabilization Fund balance, which is our operating reserves, is estimated to be $7,507,331, or 8.4% of our, of our net revenue. It is important to note that free cash in the General Stabilization Funds each may be used for any municipal purpose. And also that the town's financial advisor confirms that the terms of the bond rating agency's assessment of the strength of the town's unrestricted operating reserves, free cash and general stabilization funds are valued the same. One is not materially better than the other, and both are considered positively in the maintenance of the town's AAA bond rating. And in that regard, it's important for us to realize that Winchester is one of 14 cities and towns in the Commonwealth to have a Moody's AAA bond rating, and one of 28 that have Moody's and/or standard and Moody's and/or Standard and Poor's AAA rating. Operating reserves is one of several factors that the rating agencies consider when making its rating determinations. Last August, when Moody's was considering downgrading the federal government's credit rating, Moody's reviewed AAA bond rating issuers nationally, and with the exception of municipalities with very strong reserve positions, they conducted a review of everybody except municipalities with very strong reserve positions. In Massachusetts, there were three municipalities, Boston, Cambridge, and Winchester, that had reserve positions sufficiently strong to avoid review. Here's an example of, in fact, what this can mean to us. If we assume, for example, that we build a new high school or complete a major renovation of the existing high school, and that it would cost approximately $60 million, a reduction of the AAA bond rating by one level would cost the town approximately an additional $70,000 in interest the first year and approximately $1,002,000 over the life of the bonds. A two-rating drop, which we would hope, certainly we could avoid, but a two-rating drop would approximately double that additional interest cost to $141,000 the first year and approximately $2,392,000 over the life of the bonds. Perhaps a more timely example actually occurred just this evening when the town's treasurer informed the Board that the town had received six bids for the refinancing of a 2004 bond and also financing to cover two new projects. The refinancing will, in fact, save the town, based on the new rate that we've received, $1.1 million over the remaining life of those bonds, another 13 years, I believe. The primary distinction between the free cash and General Stabilization Fund is that the General Stabilization Fund will require a two-thirds vote to transfer money in and out, and the Board feels, and senior management does as well, that the two-thirds vote requirement is appropriate for a substantial portion of the town's operating reserves, and it's a standard that is consistent with our tradition of prudent financial management and with the use of the General Stabilization Fund for non-recurring costs and as a true rainy day fund. And so for these reasons, and as part of the town's continued prudent, long-term fiscal management, the Board requests that you support and approve Article 28. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee? Two-thirds vote required.
The Finance Committee recommended favorable action. This is a conservative thing to do. It increases the amount in the General Stabilization Fund, currently $1.1 million, consistent with town policies, in order to reserve sufficient funds for true fiscal emergencies. It is still an operating reserve and can be appropriated by Town Meeting. It's a standard practice, and it's viewed as positively as free cash by investors.
Thank you very much. You ready for the questions, ladies and gentlemen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair declares that it's unanimous. Obviously, more than the two-thirds. Article 29, it's moved and seconded that schedules two, three, four, five, and six of the compensation plan be amended, revised, and modified in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board as set forth in Appendix A, fiscal year 2013 municipal non-year compensation schedules, and I've added, because there's two of them, dated July 1, 2012, and January 1, 2013. And Kevin Yu is around someplace, who is the head of the Personnel Board, and this is their article. And if you have that, ladies and gentlemen, there's two motions, there's that one and the second motion is coming up for $82,301. Mr. Yu.
Yes, thank you, Town Moderator. The purpose of this motion is to amend the compensation plan for management, non-union employees of the town to reflect a 1% wage adjustment for July 1, 2012, and a 0.95% increase on January 1, 2013, for fiscal year 2013. This is consistent with the collective bargaining agreements that have been previously approved by Town Meeting for fiscal year 2013. The impact is on between 70% to 80% employees, 30% of that, or 25, are in the management position. Motion two, moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $82,301 to provide for the adjustments in salaries and wages and other benefits for non-union municipal employees in fiscal year 2013. The $82,301 be added to appropriations previously made under Article 9 to the following service accounts, which are listed in detail, as you can see, in Article 29. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. Why don't you have a seat down front for a minute? May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Brian McCarthy, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee votes favorable action on this motion. The Finance Committee supports the appropriation of $82,301 for non-union personnel wage increases. However, the Finance Committee believes that increases that are not contractually obligated should be primarily allocated on an American basis and does not support treating non-union employees as if they were members of a union. We look forward to hearing from the recommendations of the non-union study committee.
Thank you very much, sir. So the question comes, these are both majority votes. The first motion moved and seconded that schedules two, three, four, five, and six of the compensation plan be amended, revised, and modified in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board set forth in Appendix A, dated July 1, 2012, and January 1, 2013. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion two, it's moved and seconded that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $82,301 to provide for the adjustments in salaries and wages and other benefits for non-union municipal employees in fiscal year 2013. The $82,301 to be added to appropriations made under Article 9, and that's the budget article on the yellow sheets, to the following personal services accounts, and that list by account totals up on your motion sheet to $82,301. Are you ready for the question, ladies and gentlemen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws, and the motion on page 70 is, it's moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws, Chapter 13 Wetlands, adopted November 1987, as heretofore amended and incorporated then by incorporating the following changes, and the list of those changes is on page 70. And I'll recognize the Town Clerk, who is the sponsor here. A majority vote is required.
Good evening. This is one of the last items regarding the fee study. Back in 2006, I had done an analysis and an evaluation for the Town Manager, and every year after that, we've done a review with the department heads, and when appropriate, we've made recommendations. There are three bodies that change the regulations on the fees, the Town Meeting for any code of bylaw changes, the Board of Selectmen, or also additional departments individually similar to what we've done with the Board of Health. So this is just a standard fee increase. We have had the Conservation Commission, of course, weigh in on it, and these fees are listed. The one thing I will just point out, back in 2006, the rates were comparable to the communities around us. We raised the rate in 2007, and now here again. It's been five years, and the communities around us are also comparable.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Are you ready for the question, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. That brings us to the delayed article, Article 4, which is the famous shade trees, and we just, we're going to have a quick, go ahead, come on up, or to the mic, either one.
If I may, I'd like to at least tee things up so to prepare, give a brief presentation.
Okay, but I'll make the motion?
Yes.
It's moved and seconded that Article, what number, 31?
Article 4.
No, not 31. Oh, Article 4. I knew it was the next one. It's moved and seconded that Article 4 be indefinitely postponed. Mrs. Craga.
Yes, if I may.
Yeah, either way.
Okay, well, I'm here to tell you a little bit about public shade trees. It's been a little bit of an odyssey here.
Can I hear you?
Thank you. Yes, it's been a little bit of an odyssey, but here we go, to you on public shade trees. This is brought to you by the Permanent Street Tree Committee, created in 2009. We're advocates for street trees. We provide policy recommendations to the Selectmen Planning Board as well as Capitol Planning. We advise on public shade tree planning program. We have planted 180 trees over the last three years, and we recommend use of funds for the DPW Tree Funds and the Peter Van Aken Street Tree Fund. The members of the committee are as above, are as noted here. Jay Gill is our tree warden, myself representing the Planning Board, Jim Whitehead, the Conservation Commission, Julie Rehman-Schneider, and Peter Wild from the Town Forest Committee. We do have a very active street tree program. We want more trees because they not only help the aesthetic appeal of the town, contribute to neighborhood character, but also they contribute greatly to natural habitats. They also contribute to traffic calming and also are a major contributor to flood mitigation. If you can imagine that, I'm a tree, a tree about my size, taller, of course, and full-grown, depending on the species, could actually
Speak into the microphone.
Could actually allow for additional permeation of water into the soil of 2,500 to 3,500 gallons of water a year, depending on the species, of course. Of note is the Tree City USA designation, which we were just recently granted within the last week, and congratulations to the Board of Selectmen on deciding to go after that designation. It helps to support our existing tree programs and is due in part to the fact that we actually do have a, we actually do have something on the books already, but more about that later. We do want you to be aware of what exactly a public shade tree is. It is a tree that is within the public right-of-way or on the boundary thereof. So you can see the tree that is a private tree is back away from the street, away from the grass boundary, as well as the sidewalk. We already are covered under Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, which provides a general framework and provides enabling legislation for communities to create their own local bylaws with local flavor. But it does have a lot of shortcomings as well in that it is not specific about a lot of things, and allows that to the committee, to the various communities. What it does do is it clarifies responsibilities and makes things clear. It incorporates town policies and practices to address ambiguities in state law. What it does not do is affect trees on private property unless they form a hazard to public How we got here was an overall process. We identified the need for a new tree bylaw. We developed a draft, went through numerous drafts, was reviewed by legal counsel as well as the Town Special Land Use Council, was reviewed by the Committee on Government Regulation as to form, and was then presented to the Board of Selectmen. They had a few issues with it. We'd met with them and came to a conclusion on that, and those were the amendments that you saw out at the table on Monday. One of the things that you do need to be aware of, however, as I was reading through the revised motion this evening, is that there were a couple of additional amendments that needed to be required, and in conjunction with that, I think it wise to postpone to the Fall Town Meeting and to call for indefinite postponement at this time, and we will be back in the fall, just to ensure that we have caught every little jot and tittle of any changes that need to be made. But by the way, you should know that this is our current ordinance that we have in our code of bylaws. No person shall in any manner cut or mutilate any tree, not his own, standing in any street or public tree in town, or shall any person tie or fasten any horse or any animal to any such tree. You're out of luck, Trigger. Thank you very much.
Okay. Question comes on indefinite postponement of Article 4. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article 31, to see if the town will raise and appropriate transfer from available funds sums of money to supplement or reduce appropriations voted on the 2012 budget. No motions in hand, so it's more, it's moved and seconded that Article 31 be indefinitely postponed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article 32, and that motion was provided by the Finance Committee in a handout, I think it was last week, but it's moved and seconded that the Board of Assessors, oh, this is a Town Manager motion, I think, it's moved and seconded that the Board of Assessors be authorized and directed to take the following sum of money from available funds for the purpose of reducing the fiscal year 2013 tax levy, $1,054,643. Do we, Mr. Town Manager? Is your motion? No, Ms. Louie is going to do it. Do you want?
I forgot, we didn't move to amend this yet. I would like to move to amend this to 1161940 to reflect
Give us that number again. 11?
1161940 to reflect the additional school funding in the amount of $107,297.
Okay, so it's moved, it's moved and seconded that we amend the motion from $1,054,643 to $1,161,940. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You agree, Town? Yep. Okay, you ready for the question? Do we have a recommendation from the Town Manager? Yep. It's your article, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was paying as close attention as I should have been. I do recommend.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. You ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Article 13, it's to see if the town will vote to take appropriate or necessary actions to comply with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law known as the two-and-a-half tax cap limitation. It's moved and seconded that further consideration of Article 33 be indefinitely postponed by the Finance Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And here at 10:15, we have the last article, to see if the vote, the town will vote to hear and accept committee reports to resolve old committees and authorize new committees. Is there anybody who wishes to speak for any committee? Hearing none. It's moved and seconded that Article 34 be indefinitely postponed. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes the Town Meeting. I thank you very much, very much. Very good. Whoa. All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to make sure everybody's awake. It's moved and seconded that the meeting be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, if you've just tuned in, town meeting has wrapped up its third and final session of Winchester Spring Town Meeting here at the Winchester High School. So if you're just tuning in, let's also give you a recap of what has happened this evening on this final session. Article 17 was the opening article, a stabilization fund for, to create a stabilization fund for special education expenses, unexpected expenses within the Winchester school system. We heard from the school committee asking to establish a fund for $200,000 of a stabilization fund for unexpected expenses that crop up during the school year, such as a student transferring in to the district who needs transportation out of the district. And they would use favorable balances in other accounts to reimburse this fund. Finance Committee supported that, as did town meeting, for a $200,000 appropriation. Again, not an additional appropriation, just something from within the school budget. A bunch of revolving funds authorized, Article 18, a revolving, continuing revolving fund for the archival center, funding, funding that center through the sales of its items out of the center for a maximum of $5,000 per year. Another revolving fund was for energy use within town buildings, authorizing the fees for use of town buildings to be put back into a fund to be used for energy-saving installations and improvements within town buildings, not to exceed $80,000. Another fund reauthorized was the revolving fund for the Board of Health, taking the fees they charge for vaccinations in clinics, to go back into the expenses for those clinics with a $60,000 limit. And then we got some fairly lively discussion for, to establish a new revolving fund for the fees charged and for maintenance of the grass fields in town by the Field Management Committee. Selectman Jim Johnson said that this would stabilize the maintenance of these fields, provide for emergency repairs. He detailed the new schedule of fees that would take place, that would come into effect in, in September, and showed some slides of the fields and detailed some unexpected expenses that come up, where he said it would not be feasible to go to, back to town meeting for authorization, such as a sinkhole at Mullen Field. The Finance Committee did object to it. They thought that there was not enough transparency, and should not combine capital expenses with operating expenses. The Winchester Soccer Club was also not in favor. They felt that the Field Management Committee Council had not been receptive to their concerns, that they felt they were assessed 60% of the fees for 40% of the use of the fields. Paul Maganaro from the Field Development Council urged support, as did Steve Powers, town meeting member, who said there was a very transparent group that was, including the town manager, that would be authorized to spend money out of this fund. Chris Linsky from the school committee, speaking as a parent, said that there were very detailed reports that would go along with any expenditures. He also said, as a parent, he wanted to know that the expenses, the fees he was paying for the fields was going back to maintain the fields. Another member of the Field Development Council said that they have raised almost $1 million for field improvements, and they felt that the funding for that would be in jeopardy if the town didn't appropriate the money to maintain the fields. There was a motion to indefinitely postpone it, which failed, and then the motion, the main motion passed. This Article 22 was almost an identical motion, except for funding for artificial turf fields, with the comment that about $40,000 a year needed to be put aside in a reserve fund for replacing artificial, the artificial turf field, Knowlton Stadium, which is anticipated to be have, to be done every 10 years. That was approved on a vote, on a vote of 88 to 35. After recess, Article 23 was brought in, and that was an article to exercise the town's option to, to purchase a large section of the former Winning Farm for a dollar. We have from Town Council Wade Welch, who said that in fall of 1996, the Winning Farm, the town purchased Winning Farm, and while they were preparing to buy, discovered that a portion of the property had the possibility of a large, a possibility of contamination with building debris. So 84,000 square feet was excluded from the sale, but it was given to the town as an option to exercise at a future time. There's been remediation, ongoing remediation over the years, and said last fall, Town Council said last fall, that the Department of Environmental Protection concluded just last year that all solid waste was removed. This parcel is a part of a conservation path, and part of a larger parcel that the town will control and maintain as, as open space. We heard from an engineer that the nature of the fill found there was asphalt and concrete. It was concluded it was not adverse environmental impact initially, although some of the rules changed in 1999, and there were some contaminants found in there. So he said the town has excavated 60,000, 67,000 tons, and that the remaining soil was determined up until 2010 to be of residential quality. However, some additional contaminants were found, and to err on the side of caution, an additional 23,000 tons were removed to further improve the quality. The head of the Conservation Commission recommended favorable action, as this would come under a, was anticipated to be, come under a conservation restriction for the town. Again, the vote was two-thirds, more than two-thirds, to pass that article and make the purchase for $1. Article 24, to study integrity of town water bodies, especially Davidson Park. We heard from Drew Bataro, that said they wanted to do some more work on that and would bring that back next year. That article was indefinitely postponed, as was Article 25 for healthcare trust fund. However, Article 26, to accept Mass. General Law is for establishment of a separate healthcare trust fund for Winchester retirees, was passed. We heard that the town has a $93 million unfunded liability for retiree healthcare, and this would appropriate $250,000 into that fund, under a 30-year plan to fully eliminate that liability. That was passed. Article 27 was indefinitely postponed, as that money was used in Article 26. Article 28 was an article to move three, a little over $3 million in free cash to the General Stabilization Fund. The goal of the town being to maintain approximately 10% in this General Stabilization Fund. We heard that that helps maintain the town's bond rating, which keeps its borrowing costs down, and also heard that this was, Winchester is only one of three in the state to avoid a review last year, because of its substantial cash reserve, adequate cash reserves. Two-thirds vote was required to spend anything out of that fund. That was passed. Article 29 by the Personnel Board to modify the pay schedules of non-union employees, to allow for a 1% raise on July 1st, and a .9% raise on January 1st, 2013, was approved with the $82,000 to fund that, those raises. Article 30 was to amend building fees, to bring them more in line, as we heard, with other towns for properties that were involved with wetlands. That was passed. Article, we, and then after that, we heard Article 4, we went back to Article 4 that had been postponed, report from the Permanent Shade Tree Committee. Again, they want to bring the article back, do some tweaks, and bring it back to fall town meeting, so they moved for indefinite postponement, indefinitely postponed. And Articles 31, 32, 33, and 34 were mainly housekeeping articles. 32 in particular was passed to allow the assessors to take a little over $1 million to reduce the taxes for next year. Article 33 and 34 were indefinitely postponed, as they were not needed. Committee reports on Article 34, there were none to give. Article 33 was to make, take any actions if the town meeting had exceeded our two-and-a-half property tax limitations, to take remedial action for that. Not needed, indefinitely postponed. And that's it. Winchester Spring Town Meeting wrapped up, as you just saw, in three sessions, one back in, in late April, and then the two this week, took care of the business of the town until fall town meeting. So we want to, it's getting a little late here, so we want to thank you for staying with us, and we want to thank the crew that has been here at the high school covering this tonight. So for all of us at Wind Cam, have a great night. Thank you for joining us. I'm Alan Idon.